of Riverfront Park. But today, according to the executive session, we will be moving upstairs to executive session. I'm gonna move to public comment. Now's the time for any citizen who wishes to speak on agenda items number one through three. If you have not already done so, please fill out the green slip to the back of the room, hand it to the clerk to the front of the room. You will have three minutes to speak. The green light will come on at the beginning of your three minutes, and the red light at the end of your three minutes. Please adhere to the signals. Thank you.
I don't have any mayors.
Okay, we don't have any public comments. So at this time, Mr. City Manager, please ask for the reading of item number one, please.
Mayor, did we do the consent?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor for the consent agenda. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number one, please?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor and council, item number one on the agenda is to authorize the city interim city manager to award a contract to Pro Pipe, Inc. of Houston. The Fourth Street Storm Sewer Inspection Project consists of television video inspection, and if required, cleaning and removing any debris found in the storm sewer system in accordance with the plans issued with the contract. The work will be within the city limits, starting at the intersection of Fourth Street and North Street to the intersection of Fourth Street and Highway 69. On April 21st, 2022, four bids were received for furnishing all labor, materials, and equipment for the project. The engineer's estimate was $415,000. The bid totals are indicated in the table in your staff memorandum. Funds are available in the capital program, and the administration recommends approval of this award.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number one. May I have a motion, please?
Sure.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number two, please?
Yes, ma'am. Item number two is to authorize interim city manager to execute change order number eight, accept maintenance, and authorize final payment to Alco LLC for the sewer plant pump replacement and renewal project. On March 19, 2019, by resolution 19-063, city council awarded a contract to Alco of Beaumont in the amount of $974,960 for the sewer plant pump replacement and renewal project. Previous change orders, one through seven, in the amount of $164,491 are included in your staff memorandum. The proposed change order number eight, in the amount of negative 48,460, is required to adjust the estimated quantities in the contracts to reflect the actual quantities used in the completion of the project. If approved, the adjustment in quantities would result in a final contract amount of The project has been inspected by Water Utilities and found to be complete in accordance with the provisions and terms set forth in the contract. With the acceptance of change order number eight, maintenance and final payment in the amount of $54,549.55 is recommended. The project was funded through the capital program, and the administration recommends approval of this item.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number two. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number three, please?
Yes, ma'am. Item number three is to authorize the purchase of a new Mustang Cat generator and related appurtenances for the city of Beaumont Prison Water Tank and Lift Station. The city maintains and owns the prison water tanks and lift station facility located near the Jefferson County Correction Facility. The new permanent generator will replace a temporary generator and provide backup power to the site. Pricing for the generator and related appurtenances was obtained from Mustang Cat of Houston. Mustang Cat is the sole source supplier for the generator to have continuity through the water infrastructure system in the city. The total cost of purchase, if approved, would be $175,354. Funds are available in the Water Utilities Fund. The administration recommends approval.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number three. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve the resolution.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. Any discussion? Councilmember Neal?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Manager, do you know how much we're paying for the temporary generator that's there now?
It's a city-owned generator. It's just not a permanent installation.
Thank you. I just noted that the new generator's a year out.
Yes, sir. We have the generator that's there now. What became readily apparent, particularly during the recent ice storm, was that it's not sized to accommodate both the sewer operations that are at that site as well as the water operations. So we went ahead with the work to size a permanent generator that would accommodate everything at the site when power's out.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Councilmember Durya?
This prison water tank, does that service? I see it's by Jefferson County Correctional Facility. Is it just for them, or does it serve state, federal, everything that's out there, or what?
Services the prisons as well as a little bit away from the prisons. We don't have a lot of population in that area, but it was primarily put in for the prisons.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? No other discussion? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. Now's the time for public comment. If you wish to speak, if you haven't already done so, please fill out the green slip to the back of the room, hand it to the clerk to the front of the room. Again, you will have three minutes. The green light will come on at the beginning, and the red light will come on at the end. Thank you.
Delala Johnson, 4020 Cheryl Street, Beaumont, Texas.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Yep, I want to apologize for that outburst.
Thank you.
But anyway, there was a saying when I was coming up as a child, "It's 10 o'clock, do you know where your children are?" Does anyone remember that?
Sure.
We don't see that anymore. Right now, we're dealing with coming out of a pandemic and going into an epidemic with our children with guns. We stay off a major drive. My husband just recently had an altercation with a 12-year-old, where the child threatened to shoot him with a gun. We did call the police, but by that time, the kid was gone, and my husband was like, "Okay, well, we're just gonna, you know, call next time if he comes." There's nowhere for our children to go. The summertime is slowly approaching, and there's really not a lot to do. We have to invest into our children, because they're gonna be our next presidents, our next city council members, our next people to take care of the homeless and the senior citizens. And there's so much going on right now. And I know a family that has a blueprint for a multipurpose center, and I want to give one of these to each one of you guys, so that you can look at it while I'm talking. And we really need somewhere for our children to go. I have a 12-year-old son. I'm an older parent. He's being raised by an older parent. I'm around for my kid. These other kids have nobody. My goal is to teach my son to know that the pen is mightier than the sword. You only get to use the sword one time. The pen has a lot of ink. You got a lot of writing to do. And this summer, I'm teaching my son, who our state representatives are, who our mayor is, who our commissioners are, so that he can know that he has a better choice than going out there and doing some things that he does not need to do. We need more truancy officers. There's a lot of kids that I have been seeing that are walking around, and they're not in school. Like I said, we're coming out of a pandemic into epidemic because children are using guns. Now, when you see a grown man, and my husband has a loud voice. My husband is a manly man. And if a kid can tell my husband he's gonna shoot him with a gun, there's something else going on that we need to get a handle on. So, please, we need to do something about our kids. And my goal is to come here every Tuesday and to talk about something in the community, like our park, our imagination station. It's horrible right now. There's nails, the wood, the kids can get splinters in their hands, and there's also, like, cut trees that are just out in the open, and there's nothing being done about it. I'll be back next Tuesday. Thank you.
Well, one moment before you leave, I just want to let you know that, and the only reason why I'm gonna comment on this, because Imagination Station was in the news, and as of yesterday, the problem with the nails and the missing boards, all of that has been corrected.
Thank you.
And I even called the city manager to make sure that the news media that reported on that got an update on the repairs on Imagination Station. And because I was ready to shut the park down, because I did see the pictures, and I did see the nails, and I saw the deterioration, and it was addressed immediately.
Yeah. May I say something? I know I'm out of my three minutes. We just happened to go there yesterday. I didn't know it was on the news.
It was.
Thank you so much.
It was on the news, and corrective measures were taken. Those problems are fixed. However, when you're dealing with wood, yes, you can get splinters, but when you're dealing with plastic, because of the heat, if you slide on a slide, even metal, and with our heat index, as it is already in May, at 95 and 96 degrees, it could be very, very dangerous. So I would advise each adult to make sure, before you put your child in the park, and just allow them to run on their own, make sure that you, as an adult and a parent, is going before them and checking those things, because an accident can happen, even if it's not damaged, just from the heat.
Right.
So, thank you, and I'm quite familiar with Coach Rito. He's my classmate, so I'm familiar with the program. It is an awesome program, but with any program, it's always funding.
Right.
Funding is a huge issue, but I thank you for bringing it, and I will let Coach Rito know.
Okay, I'll leave. One more.
Thank you.
Latasha Diggles, 9335 Grove Street, Beaumont, Texas.
I'm a bit nervous, so please bear with me.
Don't. We're okay.
I want to talk about a corrupt judge and some corrupt lawyers.
Ma'am, I cannot allow you to come to counsel and call anyone's names, so if you're gonna speak...
No, I'm not gonna say their names. I know better.
If you just speak about a situation, but if you do, I will interrupt you, okay? Thank you.
Okay. I only have three minutes, of course, so I'm just gonna read out some of the comments in the court transcripts. And I ran across these court transcripts from the district clerk's office. They were accidentally mixed in with another document by accident, and I'm just gonna read out loud some of the comments. And this is coming from one of the attorneys in question. He's saying, "Your Honor and frankly, Judge, this is an idea I just had. I don't even know if it's theoretically possible or appropriate. I filed this last minute because there is just no doubt in my mind that when Ms. Such and Such gets this document, she is gonna send out a tweet about it. So I filed it yesterday. I will be here, and it's a typo, this morning, complaining about last night's tweet. Could the judge consider a court order and do some research, so no parties or no lawyers are allowed to talk about the case in any public forum? Because, you know, there is such a hot topic right now in society in general." And he's asking if my attorney or my counsel would be opposed to a gag order to silence me, to keep me from going public with the story. And of course, my attorney is saying he don't think he can agree to it. And then you have this judge saying, "You know we have a potential to make this worse." They were speaking off the record, at least they thought they were speaking off the record, but the machine was still recording, obviously. And the judge is saying, he went on to say, "You already mentioned what's going on nationally, and I think what's being done is not gonna make things better, it's gonna make things worse. And I'm afraid we might have to do that with this situation here, like I was classically taught." And I thought all lawyers are beginning to wonder what was being taught after I went to law school, but the cure for free speech you disagree with is more speech, not less. So I'm just inclined not to do the gag order, and I don't even think, I don't even like the sound of that term, but I don't blame you for using it. I know what you mean. So you have a sitting judge that's basically threatening to make my situation worse, the way he was classically taught after law school. And these attorneys, they've been trying to stalk me for a lot of money, over $16,000, for just one month of services. And wouldn't even send me and my current attorney a building statement. We had to demand it through mediation, and it was all bogus, $16,000. And it's, I mean, it's just unfortunate and rather sad. Oh, my time is up.
Well, and I kind of interrupted you, but the one thing I want to ask, is this a city?
Yes, it is.
It's not county? This is with the city?
Yes.
Municipal? Is it municipal court, right here downtown?
Civil court.
Well, see, civil court, that's county. That's not city.
Okay.
That's district court, right? That's with the district clerk and the district court.
Right.
That has nothing to do with city or city council involvement?
Some people told me I could come here and, you know, speak on the matter.
Right. So you might want to present your concerns to County Commissioners Court?
Yeah. Well, I filed a complaint with the Commission on Judicial Conduct, and they're saying he should have recused himself for something like this. And he's still under investigation. I got the last update letter last week.
And of course, we can't comment one way or another, even if it were in our jurisdiction, but it's not in the city's jurisdiction.
Yeah, that's true, but like I said, I was told that I could still come here and discuss the matter.
And you can. I mean, I didn't...
And that's all I wanted to do. That was my only intent.
Yes, ma'am.
So, I'll be back next Tuesday and the following Tuesday.
Thank you.
Richard Burton, Sr., 310 East Pipkins Street, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Hi.
Councillors, officers. My name is Richard Lawrence Burton, Sr., and I've been in this town all my life. I'm 77 years old. My concern is my neighborhood. I have been blessed to have raised three children and two grandchildren at my resident. My concern is my resident, where I live, at the speeding, the speeding on that street has gotten outrageous. Just last week, they had a wreck. Week prior to that, they had a wreck. Week prior to that one, they had an incident wherein a little kid was riding a little scooter, got ran into. This is on Adams Street. So my concern is the people, and it's gonna get worse during the summertime when they're out of school. That's what I wanted to present to this council. So I don't need no two minutes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Burton.
Mr. Burton, if you'd hold on after the meeting, I'd like to have a talk with you for a bit, okay? All right.
Michael Fennell, 3255 Cartwright, Beaumont, Texas.
3250.
Every time we turn our heads to the other way when we see flawed laws, when we tolerate what we know to be wrong, when we close our eyes and ears to the corrupt because we are too busy or frightened, when we fail to speak up and speak out, when we strike a blow against freedom, decency, and justice, Robert F. Kennedy. I know you guys have seen me up here before recently. I know we're talking about the judicial system, and we're talking about the judges, but it does affect the community, because I am African-American, and we have a community of African-Americans. I was told by my judge that I'm supposed to resolve my situation by finding another job. Well, I like to stand here in front of the community and tell the judge that God made me African-American. I had no choice. You're telling me to run? I'll be running forever, because racism is going nowhere. I promised all of you that I would expose this city and what has happened. As you can see with the young lady, this is not just happening in the me, it's happening all over the place. There's a gentleman that I spoke to who was supposed to be an activist, but I'm disappointed. He's busy going around, talking about names on different places where we have African-Americans and minorities eating crap and having to act like it's ice cream in our workplace. I'm going to come back next week. This was given to me by some groups in Washington, DC and Virginia, and I will explain this to everyone. The intergene which I'm talking about will not get away with what they did to my family and a 13-year-old child, because I know you all have children. And to have adults to behave in this way and attack children is unnecessary, and it's not going to be gone, and it's not gonna, they're not gonna get away with it. I have information. I have evidence, and I have years and years of documentation that will be available to the public after August of this year. And you nor this city will believe what you hear, see, and what you will find out, what this city is all about. And I'm disappointed, and I'm done. I'm disappointed in this city, in the city officials, the commissioners, and everyone who knows what the city has done to the minority, the minorities, and the things that we have to do in order to be accepted, in order to get equal opportunities in the workplace in different scenarios is just unacceptable, and we're gonna change that. I'm gonna make sure that it's gonna be changed. We're looking at me, oh, this and that, that crazy stuff that the ex-employer tried to play. We're gonna show some things, and you're gonna be disappointed of how far they went to sabotage me and my family. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fennell.
Stephen Hoffman, 7045 Blarney Street, Beaumont, Texas.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, staff, the planning session this afternoon, this morning, was very good, very good. I attended, and I've got good information, which doesn't always come easy these days. And as far as what you have brought up about the executive sessions, I've noticed recently, it seems like there's code words being used on what the session is gonna be discussed about, you know, color names and stuff like that. It's hard to figure out just what they're talking about. I find that kind of concerning. I know that, this is East Texas, you know how that goes, and there were some groups back when, they talked about buying the AT&amp;T building, which they thought was expensive, and then the council voted to tear it down. They were upset. They're already mad about their water, big time mad. And what I see on Nextdoor, they're researching in the charter how to do recall petitions. So, I mean, this is, you know, we need to be public and let people know what's going on. I'm making a point that when I don't understand something, I ask y'all questions. I know most of all of y'all. And, you know, you see me come to you and ask questions, and I get explanations, and it makes sense. I'm not headed. One thing that y'all told me that didn't make sense, that this is the right thing to do, but some people, they pick up bits and pieces, and they connect them however they want to, and it sounds like you're conspiring against the public, and I don't see that in any one of y'all. But that's for another day. But anyway, I do appreciate the fact that you want to have the executive session items in discussion. You know how I feel about the Battleship Texas, and I think that that's gonna be a positive. I know that there's questions about who suggested it. That, to me, I don't care, as long as it solves the problem, and I think in the end, it's good for the city. But that's just my opinion. You know, y'all have your opinions, but if we get the rear front and make it functional, and if we have something that will make us kind of a special city, that's gonna draw people. And with things, when you do a business plan, you know, one of the things they ask you in the bank when they give you a loan, is how many people come through this location that you're gonna be building this business in? In other words, well, what's the foot traffic? And if we can bring a ship in, and that brings foot traffic, downtown can't help but prosper from it, you know? And you spend some money to make some money. My dad told me that when I was a little kid, my grandfather, too. He was kind of German, so he's gotta tell you whatever you want to sometimes, but you don't want to hear it. But, I mean, it's just wherever I'm at, and I've always tried to tell y'all, honest answer, give you good feedback, because in all in all, that gets us to a better place and gets it there faster. So, I mean, that's just me, and I do thank you for what you're doing, and especially this last part about trying to discuss things more openly in public, that's an important thing nowadays. Thank you.
Mr. Hoffman, thank you so very much. The one thing I will say is that you're very, very active, and you've always attended city council meetings, so you're very informed, and you know what's going on, because you're here, and you hear it. So, thank you. So that is all of our public comments. So at this time, I will go to council member comments, and I'll start with you, Councilmember Neal.
No comment, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Samuel?
No comment.
Councilmember Felschah?
Thank you, Mayor. No comment.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes, ma'am. I have a comment. Hey, to our city manager, can you kind of, when you get a chance, can you email me and walk me through the process of, you know, how with our parks, we go around and review the status and conditions of the parks? Once whoever's doing the reviewing, who they actually report it to? Once the report is turned in, can we kind of know what are the findings of the report? Can we see if recommendations were made to fix certain things? And I just think it's unfortunate that we just had an incident at Alice, not Alice Key Park, at the Imagination Station, and I just want to make sure we're doing all preventive measures possible, that the city never gets in liability due to, you know, negligence of the park. So that's one thing, I just want to make sure you can get me that information, and I would like to see the reports.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Councilmember Gads?
Thank you, Mayor. For the second weekend in a row, the Jefferson Theater was alive with the sound of organ music. Two weeks ago, we had Phantom of the Opera, not the Andrew Lloyd Webber version, but the original silent film that came out in 1925, and it was accompanied by an organist that played nonstop for two and a half hours, like they used to do with silent movies, and it was incredible. Then this past week, they had another movie, then another organist performed for an hour and a half, again, nonstop, and prior to the movie, he just did a recital of a number of different songs. It was beautiful. One of the things that's come to my attention, though, is that the organ, the Robert Morton Wonder Organ, which was installed in that theater in 1927, needs to be exercised and played, even for 15 minutes, on a regular weekly basis. And so I'm hoping that we have somebody here in the city that can accomplish that, because dust collects in the pipes, keys start sticking, humidity changes, and all of those things can affect the ability of the organ to do its best. And we've spent so much time, effort, and money getting the organ up and running again. We want to make sure that it's properly maintained on a weekly basis. So if you could look into that, Mr. Manager, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Durya?
Yes, ma'am. I just want to say there are some summer programs available to kids. They have some on the city's website, they have some on the city's Facebook page. Mr. Marsall and over at the Sarah Street Wellness Center, the old Melton Y, they have some folks that he's been working with to set up summer programs also, so we can have something for those kids to do. I have been in contact with Mr. Rito. They've been trying to buy this property for a while, so hopefully they will be able to buy it. And I think, oh, and Mr. Law, do you still make tamales? I'm gonna get something for you, because they're good.
Also, the Pruitt Center.
Pruitt Center also, yeah.
That's all? Okay, Mr. Councilmember Durya, thank you. City manager?
No comment. Thank you.
And city attorney? Well, I would like to thank each and every one of you for coming, and I would also like to comment that this podium is always available for any citizen. We will not stop a citizen unless it's misconduct from making your comment. When I... When I made the comment of District Court versus Municipal Court, I would just like to explain that the city and city council is responsible, and our jurisdiction is Municipal Court. I understand that you are just making a verbal, public statement because you wanted to make your statement publicly, and at a podium that addresses the citizens of Beaumont, which you are allowed to. It's just that, I just wanted to make sure that you were aware that Beaumont mayor and city council, that it's not our jurisdiction, but as long as you speak decent and in order, that it's not a problem to always come to the podium. In addition, there were comments made concerning our youth and the crime that is flooding our city, and please stay tuned, because there will be some discussions as to involvement with the city council and where we're gonna move to, because it has to be addressed. We're not saying that it will all be, how can I say? Within the law, we want to make sure that the law is enforced, but when you're dealing with juveniles and you're dealing with juveniles that are not adhering to the law, there's just certain things as a municipality that can be enforced. But within the law, we want to make sure that all citizens are protected and every citizen is governed by the law. So with that being said, we will recess into executive session, and thank you for joining us today, and remember to spread the love. Thank you.